Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
Okay.
Other than, under item 7A, we'll ask for a continuance when we get to that item.
Okay, thank you. Anyone want to make a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Okay. All second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright. Public comments, so is there any comments not related to anything that's on the agenda? Okay. Announcements?
There are no announcements.
Alright. Approval of minutes, consider approval of the following September 24th, 2024 meeting minutes. I didn't see anything, I thought they looked pretty good. Anybody else?
Agreed.
I didn't see anything.
Okay, I'll make a motion?
All second.
Alright, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, public hearings. Parkway Meadows, August Ventures LLC applicant. Consider application to amend PUD ordinance number 297 and preliminary plat for Parkway Meadows.
The applicant, late last week, Thursday or Friday, asked that, an unexpected conflict came up and he was not able to attend the meeting. He preferred, and we prefer, that he be here to discuss the proposed changes. So he asked if it could be moved to the next planning commission meeting in November, I think it's November 26th. And, so, because we have already sent out the hearing notices to the adjacent property owners, as well as published in the New Prague Times, the notice of a public hearing. The correct procedure would be to open the public hearing and then continue it until the next meeting, keeping the public hearing open.
Okay. So I will open the public hearing at 7:05 PM. Anyone want to make a comment? You want me to do that?
No, we don't need to.
Don't need to.
I don't, nobody is in attendance. We did post on the city's Facebook page and tried to advertise that it would be continued, so...
Okay. Alright, so then can we just have that conversation?
If somebody could just make a motion to continue.
I'll make a motion to continue until November 26th.
Alright, I will second, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Yep, the 26th is correct.
Perfect, thank you. Alright, public hearing, consider amendment to Title 11 of zoning ordinance adding cannabis regulations.
Yeah, so we're asking to hold a public hearing today just to consider the amendment to Title 11 of our zoning ordinance to add cannabis regulations.
Okay, so I will open the public hearing at 7:06 PM. Anyone like to make a comment in relation to the zoning ordinance adding cannabis regulations? I'll make, I'll ask again. Anyone would like to make a comment in regards to zoning ordinance adding cannabis regulations? And there's no one online, right? I'll ask a third time. Anyone would like to make a public comment regarding zoning ordinance adding cannabis regulations? Alright, I will close the public hearing at 7:07 PM. I think it was straightforward, we talked about it last month. Looks like the council was in agreement.
They were in agreement with everything that you had recommended.
Okay, so...
I have nothing further to add, we've talked about this a lot.
Agreed.
Alright, I will make the recommendation to go to the city council, right?
Yes.
Okay, I'll make the recommendation, anyone want a second?
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, alright. Onto general business. Concept review for Highlands at Eagleview, Tamarack Land Development and Victory Fields LLC applicants.
Alright.
Brandon will be handling the presentation and then we do have a representative of Tamarack here if they have anything to add after the presentation.
Okay, awesome, let's jump in. So, we're here talking about a proposed development north of the school, the elementary school, the northwest corner of the city, being referred to now as Highlands at Eagleview. This is a concept plan review, it's only in the beginning stages, and the co-applicants are Tamarack Land and Victory Fields. So, the property is 50.44 gross acres. The concept plan has not yet been reviewed by the planning commissioner or the city council. The property is currently zoned planned unit development residential. This PUD zoning reflects a development that had been proposed on the property in 2005, which was referred to at the time as Eagleview Estates. The 2005 PUD agreement stated that the underlying zoning should be R1. Because the PUD agreements and zoning of record predates the merger of the two cities, and also because it's nearly 20 years old, staff agree that the property should be entirely rezoned. Future zoning should be consistent with the city's 2040 comp plan, which guides the property to low-density residential. And here you see the property, it's indicated here by the pink box, and as you can see, it's in the very northwest corner of the current city limits. Alright, so the neighborhood conditions. To the south of this development is a roughly 75-acre parcel, which contains a single-family residence and agricultural use. This property is located outside of the city limits, but it is within the city's planned 2040 growth area, and is also guided for residential development. Also to the south, as I said, is the location of the New Prague Eagleview Elementary School. To the east of this development is a roughly 30-acre parcel that is currently located in the township, in New Market Township, but is within the city's planned 2040 growth area and also guided for residential development. The planning commission reviewed a concept development plan for an 80-acre property, which included this 30-acre property, and provided feedback back in 2021. To the north of this proposed development is an agricultural 39-acre parcel, also owned by Victory Fields, the applicant, and large lot rural residential properties, which are approximately five acres, acres a piece in size, with single-family detached homes constructed on most of the parcels there. The parcels to the north are currently located outside of the city limits and outside of the growth area, but within the ultimate sewer service area of the city. To the west of the proposed development is a primarily agricultural property located outside of the city limits and outside of the 2040 growth area, but again, within the ultimate sewer area, sewer service area. The city's 2040 comprehensive land use plan guides the property to low-density residential land use. This land use designation is characterized by low residential densities that provide opportunities for a variety of detached, single-family residential housing options. Traditional single-family detached homes at the lowest of the urban densities are typical uses. Lower densities are often required to preserve and protect environmentally sensitive land. At the present time, this land use designation corresponds with our R1 and our R2 zoning districts. The proposed use of the property for single-family residential homes meets the intents of the 2040 comp plan. The comp plan calls out our required density of 2.5 to 5 dwelling units per acre. This current concept plan contains 148 lots on 50.44 acres, which equates to 2.93 units per acre. So as I said, it's 50.44 acres, currently zoned PUD. The property must be rezoned to a new PUD, and, yes, that's what we are proposing. So, this slide here shows the intent of PUD zoning. The relevant intents for this particular development is C and D, to provide for variations in the strict application of the land use regulations in this title in order to improve site design and operation, while at the same time incorporating design elements such as construction materials, landscaping, lighting, and et cetera, that exceeds the city's standards to offset the effect of any variations and to promote a more creative and efficient approach to land use within our city. So, PUD proposed to allow for the slight reduction in lot size and lot width within the development. Examples that have been used in other PUDs approved by the city to achieve this purpose are, as shown there, we've talked about a lot of them in many plans, but the one here that is relevant is the increased housing design standards. Because the co-applicant, Tamarack Land Development, submitted a narrative outlining their concept plan submittal and their proposed development. The narrative identifies public benefits for the PUD developments, including affordability and diversity of housing styles within the community. Also mentioned was the creation of more ponding and open space in the lower area of the site. The statement implies that more ponding and open space is being proposed than is required, which staff isn't able to confirm yet at this high of a level, but staff would request additional information to determine if the open space being proposed exceeds standards for the development, and more information regarding the proposed diversity of the housing styles within the development as well. Okay, so, this slide shows the current concept plan for the proposed PUD. This plan may be tweaked, and was tweaked, as we continue through the process, but here, as you can see here, this concept plan shows the 148 65-foot wide lots, as previously discussed. This concept plan also features the centralized ponding area that I just talked about, denoted by the wetland feature in the middle there. Section 1138 of the zoning ordinance also identifies criteria to be considered as part of the request for rezoning. I'm just going to go through these quick. The proposed action has been considered in relation to the specific policies and provisions of, and has been found to be consistent with, the official city comprehensive plan. The proposed use is or will be compatible with present and future land uses of the area. The proposed use conforms with all performance standards contained in this title. The proposed use can be accommodated with existing public services and will not overburden the city's service capacity. And traffic generation by the proposed use is within capabilities of streets serving the property. And important to note that staff believes that the request to rezone the property to a new PUD meets all the above stated criteria for rezoning. Okay, so the following table contains a summary of the variances being sought by the developer as part of the PUD application. This table assumes that the R2 district requirements are being applied to this development. So as you can see there, the only variation is the minimum lot width of five feet. There might be more discussions on the block lengths, et cetera, as we go forward through different plans, but as of right now, they're asking for a five-foot difference on the minimum lot width. For all newly created lots, all site plans for a single-family home shall provide location for a three-stall attached garage, whether or not construction is actually intended. Tree preservation, we've all talked about this a lot as well, that's the same as it always is, 40% of significant trees must be preserved and 60% may be removed, and a tree inventory will be needed. So landscaping, there are some double-frontage lots on here, so we had to go into a little bit more detail here, but lot depth, the double-frontage residential lots shall have an additional depth of at least 20 feet, designated as an additional drainage and utility easement in order to allow for some space for buffering and like, screen plantings along the back of the lot line. Lot width, lots which border a major collector or arterial street, on a side yard shall have an additional 10 feet, designated as a drainage and utility easement again, in order to allow for space for buffering, for screening. The concept plan submitted does not show enough detail for us to determine the depth and the width of the lots, of the double-frontage lots, so a screening plan must be submitted as well. In addition to these developer obligations, section 11103, the zoning ordinance states that two trees must be planted upon each lot at the time of building permit, sod placed in the front and side yards, and rear yards must be seeded, hydroseeded, or sodded. These landscape requirements apply to the builder at the time of the building permit as each new home comes in. Easements. So easements have yet to be depicted, which is required by our city code. Section 1296 of the subdivision ordinance requires that 10-foot wide perimeter easements and 5-foot wide interior easements be dedicated along all lot lines, and 10-foot easements are required along property lines that abut undeveloped properties. Larger easements may be required where infrastructure is installed or to protect required drainage soils. Sanitary sewer. Sanitary sewer service is available on the east side of this property, along Nevada Avenue via six-inch PVC sewer force main. The force main is within Nevada Avenue and terminates approximately 150 feet north of the pavement on the north end of Nevada Avenue, and it's approximately eight feet deep in the ground. Preliminary utility plans have yet to be submitted. When they are, they will need to be consistent with our sanitary sewer plan. The force main will become operational only after a lift station is installed. And the city sanitary sewer plan calls for a system lift station and a force main along the east side of the property, meaning that the lift station and the force main will be permanent and intended to serve a larger area, as you see here depicted by W5 on the picture there. The city typically pays for the system, for system lift stations and force mains, provided there are adequate funds available in our infrastructure fund. A desirable option would be for the developer to install and construct a lift station and the force main during construction of the first phase of development, and the city would then reimburse the developer. Terms outlining the agreement would be outlined in a development contract. In order to develop the property, a sanitary sewer lift station must be installed at a low point, and a sewer force main will need to be extended from its current termini at the north end of Nevada Avenue to the new lift station. Water. So preliminary utility plans have not yet been provided. Water service is available on the east side again of the property along Nevada via 12-inch ductile iron pipe. The water main is within Nevada Avenue and terminates approximately 150 feet north of the pavement. The city's water plan depicts a future 12-inch trunk line running east and west through this property, as you can see on that photo there. The developer will be required to implement this plan during development, and the city does reimburse costs of oversizing for any water mains greater than eight inches in size. The city also seeks looping of the water system to the degree possible, and seeks to avoid any dead-end water mains, so the developer will be required to stub water to adjacent undeveloped properties. Stormwater. A stormwater plan has also not yet been submitted for review. The concept plan shows one stormwater ponding area on the property. City access must be provided, and city staff believe that it is. A 10-foot wide vegetative buffer is required from all high-water levels around all stormwater ponds. A storm sewer line exists along the entire east side of the subject property. The 36-inch HDP line was constructed as part of the 2005 development and flows north under 250th Street where it discharges to the surface. And another unique thing about this property is that the entirety of this property lies within the Scott Watershed Management District, and the surface flows towards the west of the northwest. The portion of the property shown in the black hatch on the drainage map there has discharge rates that are more stringent than the existing runoff rate matching schemes around the rest of the city. So these extra restrictions were a commitment by the city to the township as part of stormwater improvements associated with the school, and are meant to protect downstream properties from erosion and flooding. The city engineer's office should be consulted during design to ensure that these restrictions are met, and the lower rates may have the effect of increasing detention volume for the project. Another unique thing about this property is that there is a drain tile there, a pretty big drain tile system. So city staff are aware that there's an existing drain tile system throughout the subject property, which provides agricultural drainage for it. Staff's understanding is that the drain tile system was connected downstream to the city's storm sewer in 2015. Drainage patterns and areas should be verified by the developer, and the existing drainage pattern must be perpetuated, and the existing drain tile cannot be rerouted into the stormwater ponding areas. Wetlands. So wetland delineation and MN RAM report will need to be completed prior to development of the property. As always, wetland buffers are required, and buffer signs are required as well. The subdivision ordinance requires that wetlands and buffers be contained in outlots and conveyed to the city upon the filing of the plat, and there are no FEMA-designated flood plains or DNR-protected waters on this property. The proposed development borders on three existing public streets, Nevada Avenue on the east side, 255th on the south, and Texas Avenue on the west. Nevada Avenue and 255th Street are identified as major collector streets in our city's transportation plan, and Texas Avenue is identified as a minor arterial roadway. Okay, so the purpose of a major collector is typically to link neighborhoods together within the city or link neighborhoods to business concentrations. Access to collector roadways should be made via local streets, and private access should be prohibited. Public street connections to major collector streets should be spaced at least 660 feet apart, and this concept plan shown here shows three proposed connections to 255th Street at the southern end of the property and one connection to Nevada on the east side. Staff notes that, as shown here, it probably doesn't meet the 660 spacing requirement. Nevada Avenue. So, Nevada Avenue is stated, is classified as a major collector street in the city's transportation plan. Staff's preference would be that Nevada Avenue is constructed to the northernly property line of that plat. However, the street lacks the full right-of-way needed to construct the full street. The existing right-of-way, as it stands today on Nevada, adjacent to and east of the property is 35 feet. This 35-feet right-of-way was dedicated during, as part of the New Market School Edition plat from 2005, which contemplated that the future Nevada Avenue would be centered between the Victory Fields property and then the Sullivan property that stands to the east. The current standard for a major collector is 100 feet of right-of-way, so staff recommends that the additional 15 feet of right-of-way be dedicated on the Victory Fields property for Nevada Avenue during the plating process. The additional 50 feet will be dedicated during the plating of the Sullivan property when that develops to the east. The improved section of Nevada Avenue located adjacent to and south of the subject property was constructed at 40 feet in width and with insurmountable curbing. The city's transportation plan shows a northernly extension of Nevada Avenue from 255th and to the property line of the subject property. 255th Street borders the entire property to the south. As previously stated, it's identified as a major collector street. There is an existing trail there, along the north side of 255th, adjacent to the portion of the property. The trail should be extended from its current westerly termini and west to Texas Avenue, as indicated on that picture to the right on the bottom, it's the highlighted mark is the missing trail section. And the future sidewalk on the south side will be, can be incorporated in the future when the property to the south develops. Texas Ave, it borders the property to the west, it's under the jurisdiction of Scott County, and they have it identified as a major arterial roadway, or we do, sorry. And Scott County seeks a total right-of-way width of 150 feet, which is 75 feet from each center line, which they already have, so no additional right-of-way is anticipated along Texas Avenue. There's a lot of local streets, so several local streets are depicted on the concept plan. Local streets must be in a minimum of 28 feet in width with insurmountable curbing, within a 60-foot right-of-way. Sidewalks are required on one side of the local streets, and the additional high-level comments are as follows. I'm just going to read the last one because it's the most important one. There are two existing homes located at the northwest corner of this proposed development, and the concept plan should provide for public access to those properties to allow for future development and for the future closure of Texas Avenue access points. The city subdivision ordinance requires that concrete sidewalks are constructed on at least one side of all the local streets. The transportation plan requires that sidewalks be constructed on one side and trails be constructed on the other side of collector streets. The 2040 park and trail plan further identifies a proposed sidewalk and trail corridor along Nevada Avenue. Will need to construct five-foot sidewalks adjacent all local streets, construct a 10-foot trail on the north side of 255th, construct a 10-foot trail on the east side of Texas Avenue. Once the development proceeds to a formal application for the preliminary plat approval, staff will also be seeking recognition from the Parks Commission regarding the location of the proposed sidewalks and trails within the development. Parks-related comments. The city subdivision ordinance requires 8% of all land to be dedicated for parks, playgrounds, public open spaces, or trails, and/or the developers shall make a cash contribution to the city's park and trail system funds roughly related to the anticipated effect of the plat on the park and trail system. If no land dedication is required, then the park fee has been established at 8% of the fair market land value. More parks-related comments. The city's 2040 park and trail plan does not identify any park search areas on the subject property. Based on this park plan, staff is recommending a cash contribution versus land dedication for the subject property. This item was able to get squeezed onto the previous Parks Commission agenda where they preliminary gave their feedback requesting land dedication at a 3-2 vote. Pursuing parkland dedication as identified in the city's 2040 park and trail plan will allow for an approximate 12-acre park area to be acquired to the east in the future, and the park dedication funds received from Victory Fields can be used to build out that park system, the park system either there or in other locations. So some miscellaneous items. Staff believes that we should have a neighborhood meeting, and it should be held prior to any formal public hearings on the proposed project, just so we can educate the adjacent landowners about the proposed developments and obtain their informal comments and feedback prior to submitting a formal development application. On-site marketing, co-properties, so as you'll see, there's that little sliver of red there, tiny bit right north of 255th. The concept plan submitted will require acquisition of this additional property. The oddly-shaped sliver of land is described as Outlet B, New Market School Edition, and was created in '05 during the plating of the school property. Staff recommends that the property be incorporated into the plat if that's possible. If not possible to incorporate into the plat, then one of the street connections to 255th would need to be eliminated. Additional comments. The city engineer, public works director, and city attorney all reviewed, and their comments were incorporated into this report. The police chief had nothing to, no comments at this time. The fire chief did not respond yet. The building official has reviewed the concept plan and also has no comments at this time. And, as of our latest data, there will be .55 students added per household within the New Prague School District. So, the fact that this current plan conducts, or depicts 148 lots, then it would add 81 students to the school system once it's fully built out. Staff recommendation for rezoning. Following all feedback from the planning commission regarding the proposed concept plan, the planning commission is being asked to make a recommendation to the city council regarding the development. If the planning commission does not support the proposed lot size, lot standards, and layout, staff recommends that the commission provide a specific recommendation. If the planning commission does support the proposed lots, standards, and layouts, staff would recommend approval of a proposed development for the following reasons. The fact that the proposed use of the property for single-family residential meets the intent of our comp plan, which guides this property to low-density residential land use. And the second being that the development of this property as single-family residential is compatible with the adjacent land uses. Okay, just to summarize, I'm just going to go through the list. Number one, the developer must enter into development contract with the city at the time of the final plat. Development of the property for single-family residential homes meets the intent of the 2040 comp plan. The comp plan calls out a preferred density of 2.5 to 5 dwelling units per acre for the subject property, and as I stated before, the 2.93 meets this. Development of the property as single-family residential homes is compatible. More info must be submitted regarding the proposed mix of housing styles within the development, improved site design or design elements that exceeds city standards to meet the purpose and intent of a PUD zoning. Tree inventory must be completed. Additional lot depth and width must be provided for on those double-frontage lots. Comprehensive screening and landscaping plan, meeting the requirements of those two titles, must be provided for lots that abut major collector or arterial roadways, and the screening requirement applies to Texas Avenue, 255th Street, and Nevada Avenue. Drainage and utility easements will also be required during the plating process. Sanitary sewer lift station must be installed. 12-inch trunk water line must be installed running east and west through the development. A 10-foot wide buffer from the high-water level is required around the stormwater ponds. An extensive drain tile system exists on the property, and we wanted to make that aware. A wetland delineation must be completed before preliminary plats. Public street connections to major collector streets should be spaced out at least 660 feet apart. A temp cul-de-sac will be required where there's any proposed local street that's extended past 150 feet in length, also with a future road extension sign required. Acquisition of the onsite marketing property is recommended. If the property is not acquired, a redesign of the concept plan will be required to remove a street connection. An additional 15 feet of right-of-way dedicated, dedication will be required along Nevada Avenue. Trails must be constructed along the north side of 255th and on the east side of Texas Avenue. Staff recommends cash and lieu of land for park dedication, however, the Parks Commission has recommended parkland dedication. Following a recommendation by the planning commission, the final recommendation regarding park dedication will be made by the city council. A neighborhood meeting is encouraged prior to the formal plat application, and the outlot shown along the northern boundary of the plat is not permissible under the city's subdivision ordinance. There was a little tiny piece, but that was like an outlot, but they fixed it. So that's irrelevant now. And the planning commission is being asked to provide just your general feedback regarding the concept plan and make a recommendation to the council.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Comments, questions? That was a lot.
I know. I never know how fast to go through it, like, do I want to take an hour or do I want to rush through it?
Do we want to start at a specific area? How do you want to tackle this?
I will also say that about four hours ago, we received a completely different concept plan.
Oh.
So, they actually really fixed a lot of the things that we, that I just discussed, so...
Okay.
We haven't had a chance to really look in-depth to it yet, but...
Okay.
Yeah.
So you're not sure which, okay, got it.
And I can put a picture of it on the screen if you want, just so we can talk about it easier.
Sure.
If I can find one here.
So really, the concern is the, or not concern, one of the things we're to talk about is the lot size, right?
Yes. So the variation from seventy-foot width to sixty-five is really the only variation that they're asking for now. Originally, they were asking for a slight reduction in lot size from eighty-four to eight thousand, but.
Okay, I thought I read that.
That was, that was also corrected in, yeah, that was also corrected in the one they sent over a few hours ago.
Okay.
So.
Thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah, sorry.
I'm pretty sure it said something different. Okay, so lot size, any concerns with going with the, from seventy to sixty-five? No?
Personally, I don't think it's any issue.
Okay.
So on the lot sizes, she'll just add, just to make sure everybody, our minimum lot size is eighty-four hundred square feet.
Right.
And with the revised plan that they submitted this afternoon, they will meet eighty-four hundred square feet with all of the lots. So they made them five feet narrower, but longer, or deeper than our code would typically require.
Oh, okay. We're okay with the sixty-five feet?
Yes.
Okay.
They're not asking for any deviations from setback requirements, so they'll meet our standard setbacks.
So then the only other question would be the parkland dedication?
Yeah. So I noticed that you said the Parks Board wants actual land dedication. How would that, how would that impact what they've got going on right now compared to the cash?
I mean, it would impact it, yes. They would figure it out, but just based from staff's perspective, just based along the fact that our park and trail plan doesn't call for one here is why we are recommending against the Park Commission's recommendation.
Do you have, go ahead.
So if you apply the eight percent dedication to this development and, and the city chose to take the full eight percent in land, it would be four acres. So would reduce the development, you know, fairly significantly. Number of lots, we don't know. I guess we would have to put that back to the developer to figure out. Sometimes the city can take a combination of land and cash. I think, you know, I think, I'll let Jake speak on it a little bit when I'm finished. We have a lot of neighborhoods with a lot of really small parks. And four acres is, is not a small park, but I think we're trying to get away from the really small pocket parks and, you know, kind of get to larger parks that have more amenities, more regional parks. Yeah, a neighborhood park under our park and trail plan is approximately ten acres in size, so we're looking for a bigger neighborhood park, just happen to be slightly to the east.
Do you have any more of the Parks Commission, like, comments and like, are there rationales?
Jake was at that meeting, I think. I, I mean, I stated in the staff report, I think we acknowledge as staff that if there is not a park here, it will, this property, this development would be underserved for a period of time.
Right.
Until that property to the east develops and, and that park is developed. And it's hard to project the timing on that, but we know it is owned by an investor who has submitted a concept plan, so we, you know, can't predict the economy. And then the school property does contain a park area, which is not accessible during certain times of the day or certain times of the year. So I'll turn it over to Jake.
It's probably easier to explain. Can you throw up the Parks Plan?
I think it was in the presentation. It might be fine if everyone can see, okay? So this is the park service area that Renee was talking about with the property right here. A portion of it would be served currently by Wagner Park, which has that large pink radius. So a majority of the property would be underserved until this park over here called for in the comp plan would develop. The Parks Commission was split, I would say, two, two with one on the fence going for land dedication. Staff's recommendation is simply, we decide to build a park here, it's gonna take away from the service area over here. It's gonna relatively miss everything that goes out into the township. This is why the comp plan was designed the way it was. The parks and the areas they are is to maximize that service area. So we're not basically spending twice as much to serve the same amount of people.
Thank you.
Yep.
Comments?
I just wanna touch a little bit more on that park service area. It's probably evident, but, so that pink area shown is a service area around Wagner Park, which is a community park. But there's an overarching goal of the adopted park and trail plan that all neighborhoods be served by a neighborhood park within a half mile. So if you, so you, that would be a reasonable walking distance. And that was really the purpose for the neighbor, neighborhood parks. Community parks kind of serve a different purpose than a neighborhood park. We want neighborhood parks to be walkable from the most neighborhoods.
Okay. Thank you.
And when you're done with this, also just wanna point out or remember to let the developer represent, representative
Yeah.
speak if you want to add anything.
Yeah. So I guess going back and forth, like, really, we don't know when that future park is gonna happen. And that's really kind of like the dilemma right now that's kind of hanging over us, right? Okay.
I'd be comfortable supporting staff's recommendation for cash instead of land dedication if it, it makes sense, if it's gonna follow our comp plan.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, especially with the park that's right at the school. I mean, it's easy enough to get over there, even though it's not open all the time. It's still available mostly.
I would agree.
And that didn't show up on the map just because that's not a city park, technically. But yeah, it's a short walk.
It is. So it sounds like we're okay with the land or the cash. Thank you. Cash and land, okay. Okay.
Okay. Do you have any other questions or comments about the overall concept?
I don't think so. I'd, it'd be nice to see a more detailed one with all the other stuff on it, but.
Yeah.
I'm also interested in hearing what the definition of affordable is.
Yeah, I was curious too.
Housing and how that all works.
So, yeah, if you'd like to come up and introduce yourself.
Is, can you just make sure that microphone is turned on there? Oh, yeah, there's a little button there.
Can you hear it?
Yep.
Great. Well, I did, I also wanna introduce myself. I'm Reed Schultz. I'm with Tamrac Land Development. I've been in the development engineering industry for almost a couple decades. In fact, I've done developments down here and back when Alcoa and New Market were split. So I, I'm excited to be back doing stuff here in Alcoa New Market. And I guess Tamrac is, is relatively new or locally based, but national developer, primarily serving the national home builders. Is our primary focus. We do dabble a little bit in the local builders, but focus mainly on the national builders. And so that's, that's the direction they've told us to, to come down to Alcoa New Market and explore this area because they see tremendous growth opportunities down here. Being a resident of Lakeville, I know we're getting full. And so naturally, you know, schools and everything are wonderful down here. And so that growth is, is gonna head this direction. So working here with this property owner over the last few months here, ultimately guided by, you know, the comprehensive plan that the city council has adopted is our guide. And it's our go-to, our first step that we go right to it when we look at development opportunities. And, and a lot of those pieces that we recognize what, what can make a development occur come a lot from those comprehensive plans. And so when we were developing this concept plan, obviously the park was never part of that discussion in the comprehensive plan. So that was never part of our concept plan, nor was it factored into the, the financials side of it as dedicating four-plus acres for this development. That four acres would do tremendous impact to this neighborhood just from a lot count. And, and so it would have to then go back and renegotiate those type of conversations we've had with that seller. So it sounds like you guys are in support of the comprehensive plan, which we appreciate. I just wanted to add some context to that. It's kind of where we come from and as developers. So with that, we're excited to, to be in front of you guys to present this proposal. We are working closely with a national home builder for this development. And I think what national home builders can bring to the area is the diversity of, of housing types, styles, and variations, which I think are super important, especially in developments as such like this. Our home builder that we work with on this one has a variety of home styles, variations in styles, colors, and homes, you know, exteriors and facades and all of that. So looking at a neighborhood like this, you're gonna see quite a bit of variations. And when we come before you at preliminary plat, we'll be able to provide some more examples of that and share some of those information, exterior renderings and all of that with you guys to kind of show that. But the, the national home builders can provide that one extra level of variation because they have the capabilities to make sure when they plan for homes and staggered as such that they, they develop it that way. With that, affordability is always a challenge. I, like I said, I couldn't answer that directly and say these, these prices are gonna be four-hundred-thousand dollars or whatever people deem is affordable, you know, affordable. What I will say is, is whatever we can as developers to drive the home price down is what our goal is. And, and make the end-all, you know, cost prohibitive for new homeowners, whether they're first-time homeowners or next-generation homeowners, whatever it may be. One area that we look at as developers is looking at lot width. Not necessarily lot size, but lot width. And that is all driven by the cost of the infrastructure, the utilities, and the streets. Those are hard fixed costs that we really can't control as developers. Material cost, labor cost, all of that is a fixed price. But what we can do is, is get the lot size down so we can fit more homes on the same amount of street per se. And that ultimately would drive prices downward. We do, we go to the home builders and say, what is your product type that you would be proposing here? They give us the product type and the housing style. And that lot width with the setbacks and easements and all of that is what drives that, you know, in this case, sixty-five-foot-wide lot. So we're not shrinking it down, so it's super tight. It's a product type that, that fits on that with some flexibility. They all come with three-stall garages, you know, so on and so forth. So a very traditional single-family, but that sixty-five-foot-wide is a very traditional single-family detached lot size that you're gonna see from, from the national builders on that. So that's where that sixty-five comes from. And then we can creatively design things around to maximize the development density. And as staff has alluded to, we, we can increase the lot depth to still have the same amount of lot space, a lot size that your city code requires, but achieving that, that more affordable product type on that. So without sacrificing a lot of what people like granite countertops and, and those type of things, we, builders generally can still provide all of that, but reduce costs down to be competitive in, in the market. So doesn't really probably answer your question, what affordable is. As we move forward with this project, we will be able to provide some, you know, price ranges and some housing styles and stuff, so. I do wanna just mention, as staff has alluded to, we did submit a revised concept plan. It is generally very similar, but what it was is just mainly addressing a lot of the city staff comments about providing access to those exception parcels, dealing with the landscape buffer, those type of things, just change things along. But generally, it's the same amount of lots, just a little different configuration, one less access to two fifty-fifth, some, some of that kind of stuff, so. But we're excited to move forward here with your guys' support and move forward to, you know, city council stand for any questions you guys have.
Thank you. I don't have a lot of questions, very informative, so, thank you. Like you said, it'd be nice to just, when it's finally all set and see all of it and see what the buildings are gonna look like, that'd be nice.
I appreciate you taking the initiative to address staff's comments and concerns before we even had today's meeting, so thank you.
Yeah.
Yeah, we met with them on Friday morning and so it was a very quick turnaround and, yeah, we appreciate that. Had we been able to meet with them a little earlier, we might have been able to present a different report to you, but that's just how the timing played out and so I think we have.
So do we have to go through all the recommendations or just in general?
Unless you have something that you don't agree with, I think we'll just carry staff's recommendations forward to the city council and we'll make it, we'll have a separate recommendation, let them know your feelings about the park recommendation.
Sounds good. And I do really like the idea of having that neighborhood meeting. I think that'll be very important.
Yeah, I think in these big developments, it's a good idea before we get into a public hearing and that's the first time they're hearing about it. We wanna encourage that neighborhood meeting and staff can be involved in that and it could be hosted here, but it's more of an informal, maybe a little presentation and then just more of an open house kind of thing.
I think that'll be very beneficial, so, thanks.
Okay.
So we're okay with the recommendation, with staff's recommendations, then to move forward to the city council? Sounds good.
Thank you.
Mm-hmm, thank you. All right. Then we're on to miscellaneous community developments or updates?
I have just a couple updates. I know that, I can't remember if any of you were able to do the walkthrough at the Niagara site or not, but they will be having, once they open, they will be having an official ribbon-cutting and another opportunity for you to see the facility when it's completed. And they would love to have you there. But staff was able to go through that site about two weeks ago. Things looking good there. We have, I think you may have been informed of this recently, but Lanar Homes has purchased a number of lots in the community and they have been bombarding us with building permit applications the last couple of weeks. So I think they are purchasing approximately sixty lots in total, finished lots from other developers in Ridgeview Heights and in Boulder Heights. And, and then I just included a memo. The Met Council is starting its next round of planning for the next twenty-fifty comprehensive plan. They published hundreds and hundreds, maybe a thousand pages of policy documents that cities and townships and counties will have to comply with their policies and their new plans. It was very overwhelming and maybe a bit unrealistic in their expectations. I submitted a letter on behalf of the council, our mayor and city administrator, and I included that in your packet, just to keep you informed of that.
Okay, I was wondering what that letter was like in response to.
It was in response to.
I kind of thought so, but.
Yeah. And that's all I have.
Okay. Do you guys have anything else, Rich? Township?
Nothing new. We have an election coming up. Three of the seats are up for election.
Okay.
Township board should change by the end.
Okay. Are you up for election?
I am too.
Okay. Are you rerun, running?
Yes.
Okay. Good.
Good. All right, yeah, people have been voting at city hall over the last couple of weeks. It's been really busy. I don't know how many came tonight, but as of this afternoon, I think over five-hundred people had voted already that lived in the municipal city limits.
Thanks.
I think we had over a hundred today.
Hey, I think we're over six-hundred now.
Yeah.
Nice.
It's a tradition.
All right. If there's nothing else, anyone who wanted to make a motion to adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All right, second on favor.
Hi.
All right, all right. Meeting adjourned at seven fifty-four PM.